Mayor Johnston. Mayor Pro Tem Wirick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
It was in that Manila folder, yeah.
Why am I not seeing? Okay, we are going to have a workshop distinguishing the regular council meeting. And can we start with any public comments?
If there's any cards, I may as well start taking them, but I'm not the staff one to present the presentation first.
Okay, I have two cards. One be available for questions and one no annotation. Okay, let's start then with the public comment. Brian, if you want to.
Thank you, Mayor Johnston. Just a brief aside, two weeks ago I was walking cemeteries in Northern Ireland. I know you're working to keep, put the T back in Johnston. I kept looking in Northern Ireland for my Aikens without the ancestors, and all I kept running into was Johnston with the T.
Oh, yeah, no E though, probably.
No E and no Johnson without the T, so there were lots of...
They're Scottish cousins, appreciate that.
Yeah, so, and council members, nice to be here. I passed out to you a updated sheet when I was here back in May before I left. I told you if this went to the, this period, I would give you an update. We got the financials, we reviewed them in the Finance Committee meeting this morning. So basically what we've done is I filled in the May numbers. There was a, we clarified a question earlier. Tony Thatcher says the numbers they need to look at are in the bold boxes with an arrow pointing to that. And so you'll see that we're estimating our expenses on the ones that are covered, supported by the city at 64-534-30. We're asking $60,000. The next number down at the bottom, 15-150, we came before you a year ago, we asked for $15,000 to cover three different items. The Ojai Centennial Cultural Artifacts. Families and students who can see what we spent, we spent more on the Ojai Centennial. We spent the money where we felt it was needed and important, and that certainly turned out successful for the community. So we spent a total of $15,150. So one thing that I like to pledge to you and come through is when we ask you, we'll be accountable and we'll report on every penny we spent. So you see that here. Again, it says 64-534, we're asking for $60,000. We do appreciate the recommendation that's on your seven o'clock agenda, that community outreach, that $70,000 be allocated to the Ojai Valley Museum. So thank you for that consideration. Myself, Wendy Barker, our Executive Director, and Mark Lewis, our President, he'll be a little late, are here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight is the last in our series of scheduled budget workshops to consider the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. We passed out quite a bit of information at the previous budget workshop two weeks ago, and council needed some time to digest that information. And so we scheduled this project workshop tonight to be able, hopefully, get through that, answer any questions that you have, and go over any of the final details on the final recommended budget for 1718. So I'd like to take a brief moment to get everybody oriented as to the documents that we provided. We figured we would try to get this a little more easier to follow along by color coding each section of the packet that we sent to you. So we actually didn't think to put these in the order that we're going to present them, but at least you can refer to the colors. So I'd like to start off by going through the pink sheets to begin with, which are the changes to the budget line items. And then from there, we would be going through the update to the summaries, which is the gray colored sheets. And then we'll go into the capital improvements, which is the yellow.
Just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Do we need some additional copies?
Okay. Capital improvement of the yellow sheets, the equipment replacement is on the purple And then the revised salary schedule is shown on the green sheets. And then the last part of the packet, which is on white paper, is the request, the revised request that we received from the city's Arts Commission. So if there's no further, if there's no questions at this time, I'll start by asking Mr. Livingston to go briefly through the schedule of changes to the budget line items and see if we have any questions on that. And that also tracks along with the updates to the budget summaries. Mr. Livingston?
So the, on the pink, the pink copies there that we have, we started off by the proposed budget that we gave to council on June 6th, that we're using that as our baseline, and starting from there. And this purpose of this schedule is to go through all of the changes that we have, all the changes we've made to the proposed budget from that date forward. First off, we have several changes in revenues, and the reason those came about is primarily because as, you know, the process evolved, they had a little bit more time to get some updated information, and so we made additional projections based upon what that more current information was. And so that's, some of them went slightly up, some of them went down a little bit, but that's purely a factor, a function of us having better information and making, trying to make a clearer projection where we are. And that's pretty much the first, the first section. And the other thing is we took out the 200,000 or the $308,000 that we had originally put in the budget as, from the loan proceeds from the repayment, the repayment of the loan from the Redevelopment Concessor Agency. Moving on to the expenditure side, there were a few changes that we made that are, that bear note at this point. We went through and I, I made a new projection of our estimated water costs for the year under the new, the new fee structure with Golden State Water. As I mentioned previously, we estimated that there's probably about 40 to, $40,000 to $50,000 of potential savings that we've, to be on the conservative side, not knowing where we're really going to shake out on that. We included approximately $40,000 of a budget relief in there that we spread throughout the various departments and funds within the city that are being charged for water.
Was that part of the original proposed budget, or is that an adjustment?
That was an adjustment that happened after the June 6th meeting. I mentioned it at our last workshop.
Right.
But that is included in here, and that's a, that's a big piece of the puzzle here. And I'll, I'll have some information, some actual deep, more detailed calculations that I'll distribute to council so that you'll be able to see that in the, in the next few days here.
Okay, but originally we thought that there was a franchise at about $60,000.
Correct.
And then we were discussing that that may have gone away.
Yes.
As a result of the buyout.
Correct.
And then you check the water rates or the billings, and about $40,000 worth of water is purchased, or at least a savings of $40,000.
Correct.
So there's still a $20,000 reduction?
Correct.
And that is built in now, or that will come out in the discussion?
That's built into the, into the budget numbers that we have here as part of our adjustments.
Right.
Yeah, so the revenue, the franchise fee has been removed and the, and the water expenditures have been reduced. So that's all part of these numbers that we have before us today. The other thing that we have is that council has expressed the desire to move most of the staff to a 40-hour work week, and this budget also includes the impact of that. Specifically, we are proposing to move the administrative analyst in the city manager's office, the administrative analyst in Public Works, the offices assistant in Public Works, the recreation manager, the recreation supervisor, and a recreation program manager to a 40-hour work week from a 36-hour work week. And those numbers, including related additional benefit costs, are spread through these numbers that we have before you in the different departments where, where they impact.
Do we have a number for total add-back for the cost of that?
The total, the total cost of increasing to a 40-hour work week is approximately $40,000 in the general fund. In the original proposed budget, we included $100,000 for community organizations. We have increased that to $120,000 and with Mr. McLaren's recommendations how that, some of that money should be spread out.
We're going to cover that a little bit later in the presentation.
We have revised some of the payroll numbers in Community Development Department as we looked at them and compared our original estimates to what the part-time staff primarily is currently operating at. We felt that there was room for us to move those budgeted, part-time salaries downward, and so that has been done as well. We were originally budgeting about 900 hours, which there have to be kept under 1,000 hours, and it moved down to approximately 600 hours of estimated time for the part-time plan or position that we have in Community Development. In the Public Works Department, we reduced some, excuse me, engineering services related to various different things, engineering services and also some contract services. We reduced the, the budgeted contract services for tree maintenance down from $60,000 to $30,000, understanding that we have a lot of work that needs to be out there, but we also don't believe that we're going to have that contract in place on July 1st, and we figure that it would probably take about six months to get that up and running before we start having the expenditures. So we cut that in half and anticipate that we'll have a higher amount in the coming years, but we cut that down to $30,000 in the current year. Similar adjustments were made for, for street maintenance and a few other contract services currently performed in the Public Works Department.
Okay, let's go back to the trees whereabouts.
That's on page five of eight. The middle section, last three lines or last line in there.
That's in section 1604.
Correct. Correct.
And you say it was 60 and you cut it to 30, but then you show it...
So just so we can read the schedule, let me make sure, I didn't, I should have gone through. What we see in front of us here, that first line, the first column, is the new proposed budget amount, okay? And, and so the other stuff is, and on the right-hand side, we have the amount that was on the original June 6 proposed budget and the changes that occurred from there. On that left section, we have a change from the prior year budget column, but the proposed budget is that first column of numbers that we see on the, on the, these schedules. So on that one, you see that line, we're proposing $30,000 for the tree maintenance now. If you go over to the right, it was originally $60,000, so it's gone down by 30,000, so that's a positive variance for the general fund.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Question on Public Works. I assume you're going to wind up and then be open for more questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there anything in this area that includes removal of combustible vegetation on city property? I'm particularly thinking about behind us in Stewart Canyon, that the fire chief is identified as a problem area that we've not worked on in years. I can answer that question. In preparation of this, I did ask the Public Works Director to make sure that he had sufficient hours budgeted to do that. So it is in there, there's funds available to do it. Yeah. Because the fire chief also told me that we could subcontract to Cow Fire, our crew, for maybe less money than hiring our own people. Oh, okay, we'd be happy to look into that. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And, you know, if that were the case, then it frees up staff to be doing some other things that we need to run, run the city. Yeah, absolutely.
And maybe willing to help coordinate that and also maybe run interference with the flood control people if necessary, but he didn't think that would be an issue.
Okay.
Thanks for the thought.
Yeah, we also adjusted downward a little bit of our maintenance costs on, on the parks. We looked at, at some of those numbers and thought that there might be some duplication of effort in some of those line items, and so we, we reduced some of the direct maintenance costs, and it's included in other areas, you know, it'll be covered in regular salary costs and other areas where we'll be saving some money there. Finally, a couple of other things. We looked on page six, at the very top, we have some items where we had originally had budgeted $7,500 for new flood maps, and that process is pretty far down the road now, so we're not going to need that much money, so we've reduced that number. We also have some, some requirements for the TMDL algae control stuff in our, and we get billed by the county for those costs. The county has not been billing us at the level that we had originally budgeted, so we felt that it was okay to reduce that a little bit. And, and let's see, oh, the other, the other item note down at the bottom on page six is we, one adjustment that we had made originally in the proposed budget was we'd reduce peg fees, or the peg expenditures, down to $5,000, and I realized that I went the wrong way with that because what, those are, those are for city, city equipment and things for, that we will be using here, not for the school district, but for the city itself. And, and these are funded through some deferred revenues that we have accumulated in the general, in the general fund, so we've, we put the, the expenditures at the level where they, that we felt they should be, and we increased the revenues that will be brought in from deferred revenue to offset that.
Yeah, aren't there some unexpended funds in the peg account as well?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay.
And that's what we're using.
Which is a restricted fund.
Yes, exactly. And so we, there are several, there are several projects that are on our, in our Fund 33 list and some other areas where we're going to be using some of those funds this coming year. Moving on to the capital improvement fund, we made, we went through and looked at all of the items in the CIP plan and made some adjustments in there to, to recognize that while we have a lot of things that need to be done in the city and we have great desires to do that. That's on page seven of eight on the pink sheets. We have, you know, we have a lot of work that needs to be done, we have some great desires to do things, but we also realize that there are constraints that we have, and we won't be able to accomplish all of those things in the current year. So we, rather than unnecessarily tie up money, we reduce some of those budget line items to make it a more realistic budget and to be something that's more workable for us. And these, these items here are the current year budgets. Some of these items are already in the June 6th and they didn't change, but we'll talk about the actual, some of the actual items in the CI plan in a few minutes here. But we, we were able, we actually reduced the, the estimated expenditures for, for the current year in Fund 31 by 390, almost $392,000, feeling that that was more realistic. We, you know, we look at this as a, it's really a five-year continuum of what we're looking at projects, and we shuffle them based upon when we think we'll actually be able to get them accomplished, and understanding also the priority shift. And if something came up during the year and we want to shift it, most of these things are going to have to come to council for approval anyways, and at that point, if we needed to further refine numbers, it would be easy to do so at that point in time if we bring an item, a contract.
Are you open for questions yet?
Pretty much. One other item that I want to mention is we did bump up, we need some additional vehicle purchases, and so we bumped that number slightly, about $20,000. So other than that, I'm done with these questions, or these items.
Johnson, thank you. Couple of things. One, did you find that $10,000 that Harrison's paying us above franchise fee in the budget yet?
I...
A payment for the current fiscal year and another, and a new payment for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, we had a brief discussion before this meeting, we began about that, and, well, I believe that the numbers are in there because we have talked about it, and it is, it's in current year, it's in the current year revenues, and so it is, it should be included here. I have not had time to go back and actually...
Hoping it is, that's all.
Look at it. I believe it is in there.
That's the least important of my comments, but it's nice to, if, if we hadn't counted it, that, you know...
I believe it's there, but I'll double check.
Second thing, it bothers me that the code says that hoteliers do not need to keep their records for purposes of auditing TOT beyond three years, and I believe it's been more than three years since we've audited TOT. That seems to me to be a awfully, pretty strong implication that, you know, you should at least audit it once every three years, if not more often. It may be overdue.
Oh, I would agree with that.
Okay.
You know, we, the staff resources have been such to the point where we haven't been able to embark on a, a regular audit plan, but that is on my personal list of to-dos that I'm planning to be working on in this next year. And as we go forward with that, we will most likely enlist the services of a consultant to help us with that.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Many times it'll pay for itself.
Yeah, and so we will, we will, that is on my personal work list, but it's not in the budget right now.
Okay, because that, that disbothered me, if we're going more than three years.
But we could...
Records could be destroyed, and we'd have no way of knowing.
Well, with good reason. Did I just understand to say that we didn't do it because we, of workload, but we're going to use an outside person to do it when we get around to it?
Well...
Which is fine.
Which is, which, yeah.
But I'm just wondering why it's taken me so long to do that?
Well, there, because, the reason for that is that even though we would hire somebody on the outside, there's work involved on a staff level with doing an RFP, developing an RFP, and the list of services, and all of those things, and also managing the consultants along the way. I've had experience in my prior agencies of going through and doing TOT audits, and quite a few of them actually, and so I understand what the work requirement is, and it's just, it's just a matter of that we haven't had, had the resources to free me up to be able to focus on that.
Right, and we haven't put anything in this year's budget to do that?
That's correct.
Okay.
What staff can do is we don't, we don't have to, you know, wait for next year's budget to address this. We could, we could do the research, we can bring an item to council. Council can approve that if there's a required appropriation or not, whether or not we're hoping to get money or not, but again, that's something that we could, we could bring forward as an adjustment. We could put that on the list of things to get to. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
In fact, I would say try to get it, try to get to it, you know, before the end of this calendar year, I think would be a reasonable goal. But if it's something that could pay for itself, I would agree with you. Why we didn't do it in the past, I really couldn't tell you at the top of my head. I don't really think it matters at this point if it's something that we need. It just caught my eye. Find a way to do it, especially if it will pay for itself. When you're outside the retention of records requirement. Right.
Typically, we're allowed to go back and audit three years, and...
Yeah, that's what it says.
And we should have a regular, ongoing audit process. Now, the idea, though, that our, my, our hope is, is that we expend the money to do the audits and find zero adjustments, that they're all doing it correctly.
Yes.
And that would be the goal, so this is not necessarily a net gain proposition. The experience is, is that typically there are, are a few adjustments that need to be made in there and that we find along the way, and so that is one of the things that I plan on implementing is an ongoing, where we wouldn't necessarily do everybody every year, but we would spread it out and...
Sure.
Maybe over a three-year rolling period.
Yeah.
You know, we would do, you know, three or four of them every single year over that period.
Exactly.
That's, that's on my typical, my plan.
Sounds good.
This is, I'd have to call rumor at this point, but I was told that one of the hoteliers operators, this is maybe a dramatic way of putting it, but disappeared in the night, and that there were the TOT or the funds were not sent in. Is there any truth to that?
There is some truth to that. There was one that the, the hotel is under, the two, there were two hotels involved, they are under new management and new operations, and they have been very current in keeping that. We had constant issues with this particular operator who was, he would, this operator would be delinquent for periods of time, and then we'd get them current, and then all of a sudden, they'd get delinquent again, and then they, we'd bring them current, and then they went delinquent and he disappeared in the night, basically. We have no...
Was there a report to council on the estimated loss of that and what we did about it?
We did not bring a report to council.
Okay, and are we doing anything about pursuing that?
We are, we are, we are trying to pursue, to pursue that and trying to locate the person.
Right.
Because, you know, it's not just that, there's other entities in town that are involved with this, and he has skipped out, but we can have a...
Yeah, I don't need the detail, but I just mean, I think we should know what the order of magnitude is and what the, the process is for following up when somebody, you know, charged their customers a fee that didn't belong to them and also deprived the taxpayers of funds.
Correct.
Okay, and we don't really know what the size of that is, but I think what...
Well, I have the records on what the size of that is, but I can, we can bring that back to council and provide a, you know, a, a formal presentation or inform you of how, however we want to do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
A couple more things, or?
Here, we'll rotate a little bit.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Susan.
When you started talking about that hotel owner who disappeared in the night, I was thinking that's a matter for the, for the number one ladies home detective agency, of which I'm a member, an unofficial member, I might add, but seriously...
Are you on the case? Said, are you on the case?
I'm on the case, yeah, or I might be on the case. I better not disclose it yet. But seriously, just in case the public is interested, the reason that we increased some of the staff to 40 hours was to better serve the public, not to make them work four more hours. That's correct, right?
That's correct, and the people that were, that we, we moved to 40 hours are the ones that either have duty at the counters or that they are primary online for phone calls or, or other things, yes.
Yes, I think that's good.
Correct.
And the ones that we thought might want to do it, but they explained why they shouldn't do it, we honored their wishes, so no one is being forced to work more.
I wouldn't go that far. We looked at it really in terms of what the objectives were with the council in terms of the improved service levels to the community, and that was, that was where, at least where my recommendation was made.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. And I just want to say I'm so impressed with the museum's budget because there's all these items that are zero cost or almost zero cost, like $23 here, $18 there, so good job, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I have a couple of questions. I looked on here, and maybe I'm just not looking in the right place, but what's the overall positive or negative of the, of the budget?
I just asked Mr. Livingston to make that comment, so...
Yeah, so the numbers that we have before us here, if you look on the bottom of page six of eight, you'll see that when we, the, the original budget, excuse me, I'm having problems with the, the low humidity, it's just all of a sudden kicked my allergies into overdrive here and...
Yeah, welcome to my world.
Yeah, it's crazy right now, so, anyway, so the, the net impact of all of these adjustments is that we, we start, once we, we took away that 200, the $308,000, we were in a negative position. We've added back, we've added back adjustments so that we, the net, we have a net surplus of $1,250 in the proposed budget.
Okay. My next question, in, in account 31, which is our capital improvement, I'm a little confused because we had budgeted $391,000 more in an earlier budget. We took $391,000 out, and the reason I thought you, Mr. Livingston, you said was we understand we can't do everything, but aren't these restricted funds? And if, or were we using general fund funds to capitalize some of these things?
Well, they're not, they're not technically restricted funds because it's under the control of the general fund, but we have set them aside in a special fund to accomplish our CIP plan. And so we transfer, 20% of all the TOT money goes directly into Fund 31 for projects. We do have some restricted funds in there that come via grants and other things such as gas tax money or whatever that come in, and those are restricted funds. We transfer funds into Fund 30 Fund, Fund 31 when, from those other funds, for instance, we have a separate gas tax fund. When the projects are, are being done and we spend the money, then we transfer that money into Fund 31, so we don't, we don't hold those restricted funds in Fund 31 specifically. But Fund 31 does have a fund balance that carries forward from year to year. And so what we have tried to do over the last few years with our cap, our, especially with our, our road improvement plan and the rehab, is that we try to group the, the costs between a couple, we try and put them together between two years so that we can get some economies of scale working with the contractors and bringing them in. Also, when we have certain grants that are able to, to fund part of, for instance, the rubberized asphalt, that we received some money over the last few years to do that, so we, we combine those together. So some years, we have had very little capital improvement, capital, you know, expenditures in there. I think this la, this last year was about 75, $100,000. It wasn't very much because we've been, we've been holding on to some of that money for these bigger expenditures, and so that's how we plan it. So we have a five-year schedule where we actually go through, we, we plot it out so that we make sure we keep a total positive balance in there, or don't, we don't go down below negative. to zero. So in some years, we have to use fund balance to cover our expenditures, and other years, we build up the fund balance because we're not spending at all.
Okay, so where is this $391,000?
The $391,000 in savings, what that is, is we have reduced the expected drain on that fund balance by that amount. So it all flows down into that.
Okay, and what changed between June 6 and today that would cause you to spend almost $400,000 less on capital improvements?
We went through and we analyzed all of the things that were on the CIP plan, Mr. Grant and I and Mr. McClary. We met together, we discussed the items that were on there, and we looked at what we reasonably anticipated we would be able to accomplish in the coming year. And based upon that analysis, that's where we determined that we would be able to reduce this, and also, quite frankly, we saw that we got, we would have been in a position where we would have brought the fund balance to a negative, and we can't do that, so we had to postpone some of the expenditures to another year.
Okay, so what impact does this $391,000 have on the overall budget?
The impact, this is a $391,000, however you want to look at it, reduction in expenditures over revenues, or, so it's saving money that will, won't bring us down to a negative, so it's actually decreasing our budget by $391,000 and saving that money for future year projects, because we didn't have it available.
So it has, correct me if I'm wrong, it has no impact on the $75,000 that you picked up in surplus? Is that correct?
That's correct, this is in a different fund.
Okay.
Yes.
So this is not a savings, this is a cash flow delayed purchase, right?
Correct.
Correct, it affects the fund balance for the capital improvement.
Right, but I guess, I'll have to tell you, it's really disturbing to me to think in one week, had we gone ahead on the 6th and proceeded with all those numbers, to have this much variation in a week. Now, I realize in this case, this is just deciding not to spend the money now.
Correct.
But then you also pointed out that it would have taken to a negative fund balance, which is that there wasn't enough money there to begin with. Now, some of this money was general fund money that had been allocated to that fund, is that right?
That's correct. We have the TOT money coming, and it's not, what we have to do is, you've got to understand, as we're preparing these budgets, we come up with some preliminary numbers. Based upon, Mr. Grant puts together his anticipated spending plan, is capital improvement.
I understand that, but had we...
And so then we adjust that as we get better numbers, and one of the numbers that was adjusted was TOT. Originally, we were planning a three, we were budgeting a 3% increase in TOT. When the OTID was taken away, and what we felt was prudent was to reduce our estimated increase in TOT revenues to 2%. As we looked at it and looked at some of the new numbers that have come in, projecting them out through the end of the year, we were able to adjust that upwards a little bit, so that's part of what impacted this, is the TOT number, so it's new estimates.
I understand the process. What's concerning me is if on the 6th of June, in preparation for an adoption of a budget on the, well, it was at the 13th of June, we raised a couple of questions as to how a budget that was submitted to us had a surplus of $70,000 or what, I can't remember the precise number, on the basis of using refunded money or a loan repayment to the general fund. So you went back to the drawing board, and then suddenly all this other stuff started coming through in a week. It makes it very difficult, you know, to study these numbers and then have the numbers change. Am I disturbing you?
Mr. Mayor, I understand.
Yeah, Paul.
The reason why I'm, you know, going down this line of questioning is because it is difficult for me to get my thoughts around the fact that we had $300,000 of a loan repayment in the first budget we looked at. Then we shuffle numbers up the next time, we take that out, we add 40-hour work week in there, and now we've shuffled it around, so we have a $75,000, we had a $75,000 to the black, now we have a $1,200 to the black, but at the same time, I'm seeing a capital improvement fund go down by 391,000. And I don't know why there was $391,000 worth of very important projects that we already have the money for, that we're not going to spend the money on now, and I can't help but think that some of the money that's in this 391 has somehow now stayed in the general fund and helped to balance the budget that we're asked to approve. That's the reason why I'm asking the question. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but that's what it appears to be.
No, let me walk through just a little bit, how those numbers come about. The first step, the first step in the CIP plan is Mr. Grant looks at what his anticipated projects are, okay? So he's doing that side of it while we're doing other things. One of the important things that we do, as one of our first steps, is look at where we anticipate the fund balance to be at the end of the current fiscal year. So that requires estimates based upon current numbers, and as we get closer to the year end, we can actually go in and make better projections, because rather than projecting it based upon six months' worth of activity, we can make projections based upon nine months or 10 months of activity. So the estimated beginning fund balances in Fund 31 were revised, because we had new numbers and we estimated, we had new estimates of what we would have at the end of the current fiscal year, that we would be able to carry into next year to use for the budget. Then we look at, and we go through and look at our revenue, our estimates of our sources of funding for Fund 31, including the TOT, including what we might be transferring in, for instance, from the drainage fund, from the AB 39 monies, from the gas tax fund. And we did not have some of the numbers until just recently that are included in the current numbers. For instance, you know, we have the new Prop 1B money, the gas tax 1B money that came, and we didn't have real numbers on what we would be getting until just, basically, a month or so ago. And Mr. Grant was basing some of the numbers that he had on estimates that he had been hearing from some of his organizations, which, one of the big numbers, the new money, is being spread over a couple of years, it's not actually coming in all in the year. So there's those kind of adjustments that go into this, it's not a willy-nilly process, it's evaluating and analyzing projected expenditures, projected balances, projected revenues. And so that's what we do, and our responsibilities come in, we have to make sure that the fund balances. We could have brought together, we could have brought you a budget that didn't get adjusted, and it would have been way off, and that wouldn't have served anybody, because we would end up being in a deficit position in that fund. But those numbers were not known until after the original computations were made.
And I can appreciate that, but my question is, that there's certain TOT funds that are general fund money that get transferred to Fund 31.
Correct.
There's gasoline tax that gets transferred to 31, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
It looks to me like that money's not going to be transferred to 31, it's going to stay in the general fund. Is that an accurate statement?
No.
Or is it still going to be transferred to Fund 31?
Well, when we receive TOT money, we don't even deposit it in a general fund.
The short answer is yes, and it all comes down to the fund balance, and I think another way to look at it is, we could put those items back in there, it would change the fund balance for this year, and that was part of the issue there, was making sure that you didn't hit a negative, that you didn't completely exhaust it in this fiscal year. I think part of the issue here is, I think maybe in past years, and I think in this year too, there's been a bit of an overexuberance in terms of what we think that we could accomplish. And so then if you looked at it at the end of the year, you'd say, well, you know, gee, you had $2 million worth of projects that you were planning to do, but you only did 1.5 million of those, well, you know, why not? Well, we couldn't get to this, this one had a complication, you know, whatever it may be, so...
But Steve, that happens in all budgets.
Of course.
You can't get to it.
Yes, sir.
But that wouldn't have hurt the bottom line of the budget that we'd adopted if we didn't spend the money, it would just be, it would all come out in the closing out of the accounts at the end of the year. I mean, it might be a question or two that'd have to be answered, why didn't you get to them?
Right.
But as far as balancing a budget and knowing where the money's coming from, it has no effect at all, I can tell, that I can tell.
It does, because we can't spend what we don't have, and so part of the computation is seeking, now with regard to, first of all...
We're going to spend the money anyway, Rudy, according to the scenario of not getting to it. Before we carry this any further, Randy's been very patient.
As we all...
Can I make one clarification first of all, though? As soon as we receive TOT money, 80% goes to general fund, 20% goes directly into Fund 31, so that money never touches the general fund.
And 20% is going in this year?
Correct.
That 20% is not staying in the general fund, so this balance can be...
Correct. Every month, when you receive those TOT payments, 20% immediately gets recorded in there.
That was in general...
And so if you run above budget on TOT collection, then that 20% is bigger than budgeted.
Absolutely.
All right, that's what you want.
Okay, yeah.
So I'll start with a simple comment, I need some eye drops to unglaze my eyes over that last conversation, but the interesting...
Share them with me.
Yeah.
There you go, Randy.
So to me, you know, I've been thinking about this the whole time that we've been through this process in the last month, and my first take is, I think that this process needs to start earlier. I think trying to push this through in 30 days exhausts you and exhausts us, exhausts the public, and then we end up with this. And I'd like to just suggest that next year, that we do it differently. Then the other thing is, when it comes to the budget, it seems like, you know, a budget is something that you're writing today and adjusting tomorrow. So anything and everything that we have today in writing, next week or the week after or a month later, we can actually come back, you can bring it back to council, and we can actually readjust as needed. So the $391,000 that Councilman Blatz is looking for, technically, when it arrives, we can come back, or you can come back and tell council that we found the 391 or more, instead of finding it, it's here. And then we can adjust accordingly as to, do we want to apply it to this year's CPI fund, or do we want to carry it over to next year's? Am I correct in that assumption?
Absolutely.
Okay. So having said that, I'm not sure if we're ready as a council to accept the whole budget in its entirety for a whole year, and maybe we want to look at this and maybe do it in a block of either three months or six months, but actually come back and review this, so that we can ascertain your changes better and we can adjust better. That's just my thoughts, I'm throwing it out there for us to...
Right, I don't know what process we might choose to use, but I agree with you, that there needs to be, there's, there are too many adjustments up and down at the last minute in order for policymakers to know exactly what they're dealing with, and the expectation of those in the audience that maybe have come to request funds, we have no way of knowing if we're ahead or behind. I've spent a lot of time studying this, and I am not an accountant, I am a finance person, and there's a big distinction. Rudy's a very good accountant, I'm not sure that our budget process would meet the test for financial presentation in order to make policy decisions. We don't really need to know the line item, and we don't need to know about funds that are not going to be expended. What we do need to know is really that unexpended, unassigned, spendable money in the general fund reserve, and how it is affected every year, because that basically says whether we're getting healthier or less healthy. And I found that almost impossible to boil down to where I could say, yes, we're doing better or we're doing worse, because there were too many adjustments. So what Randy suggests, I think, I'm not sure how we would want to go about that with a continuing resolution of the existing budget, and maybe some of the public works projects that need to get out and get bid and get done, to add those in, and then do an October revise where we really understand where we are. Because when I ran the numbers, I could come up with a major deficit based upon that resolution we're supposed to adopt, which says that I've studied this carefully, and this is a sound financial plan for the future. It is a sound financial, or at least from a cash flow, plan for now, but I had a very difficult time relating it to even the immediate future, that is, as to the halfway through the fiscal year. There, I went back and looked at some of the audits to get an idea, and admittedly, I know your job is very difficult, Rudy presented us with that, the, what is it called, the Schedule of Revenues, 206 to 215. And when you get, it seemed like you could look at, get a general idea up until about 208, or 206 was a year that, I don't know what explains it, there's no notation as to why we got a 27% increase, but then it started going south on us, and 209, it was down 5, and 210, it was down 10%, and then in 211, it jumped back up. So it's pretty hard to trend it with those kinds of swings. What we can determine, if we looked at the last three years, that our annual increase is, we need a good reserve to smooth things out and protect us during this fluctuation, is all I could get out of these numbers. And then when I look at the reserve, the insurance account, the one for the general fund that will protect the services of the public, fortunately, I think the council's done a pretty good job in the last few years of building that up, but it's really hard to tell where we're going with that. I think your prediction is, is that it'll be at $4 million as of June 30th, is that right?
For...
General fund...
Yeah, that's what we're, that's the initial number, yeah, yeah.
That is the...
That's what we, the requirement, the current requirement is 50% of the operating budget, so yes, about $4 million roughly.
The projected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year is $4 million. It started at $3 million, or $3.2 million. So that's really good news, I mean, it says we're doing fine, but the reason it was at 3.2 is we had a one-time transfer of money in from the Libby Bowl loan that was outstanding for the, to help with the cash flow when they remodeled it. So we get them, what, $800,000 or whatever it was came in, no, it was $1 million, so it bumped, it bumped the general fund reserve up to 3.2, even though the audit showed that the general fund reserve had actually decreased absent the repayment of that loan. Now we're looking at $4 million, and I don't know where that's coming from, that would be helpful to know that.
That's based upon our projections, based upon current year numbers. Now, I didn't want to go...
Based upon where, realized revenue that we didn't expect to, or repayment of the loan?
No, it's on our revenues and expenditures to date and projecting those forward to, and plus the current, plus the projected, it's just projected based upon the current year operations. And just to go back to your point about that large jump that we saw in, was it 2006? That was donations for the Libby Bowl fund, and that was a big piece there.
The 3.2 million fund balance was the result of the Libby Bowl, was the result of the Libby Bowl repaying the loan. That's how we got to 3.2, correct?
I'm trying to, it depends on what, I have to think about it, because we combine them for some purpose and we don't combine them, we weren't combining them for other purposes. We were considering that money that was, that million dollar roughly that was in the Libby Bowl fund as general fund reserves for most purposes, because it really was. It was just money that hadn't been sent back to the general fund.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, and it came in during that fiscal period and was accounted for in the audit, right?
Yeah, it was a transfer that came back to the general fund.
Right, so it wasn't the unexpended budget, it was a loan that was repaid. There's a difference between that and what our current revenues are. That's why it makes it so confusing as to what our financial position is operating this coming year.
Well, but previously, there was an expenditure that went out when the money went over to that fund, so it, you know...
That's not my point, Rudy. My point simply is, is that when you loan money and you get that money back, that is different than what you're earning week to week.
That's correct, absolutely correct.
And so what I am attempting to do is figure out where we are as far as living within our means, based upon the predicted revenues for the coming fiscal year and the predicted, or the recommended expenditures.
So, Mr. Livingston, when were the, where were the Libby Bowl funds repaid back to the city's general fund?
I'm trying to, things flush, but I believe it was...
Was it this last fiscal year or the prior?
It was last fiscal year.
The prior... The prior fiscal year, prior to this?
Fiscal 16.
I think it was.
16, I believe that's when it was. I have to go back and double check. But I believe it was in the 15, 16 year. But what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. And so, but what we have here is, as we go through these budgeted numbers now, we could be... You know, part of the issue is, I totally agree with you, that there's too much detail in this budget. Totally agree with you. It's the, it's the format that we've been, that I've had and that prior councils have worked with. And so I, you know, my, my desire would be to change that a little bit, make it a little bit cleaner and easier, a little bit more summarized, because you don't need to know every single line item. So I would agree with you on that standpoint. And, and the other part is that maybe we're trying to be too fine at our budgeting process and trying to zoom in too much on the individual items. However...
Not if you can have that kind of swing in less than seven days with...
We, some of the changes that we were required to make in here were based upon some changes and decisions made by council. The direction to go to the 40-hour for everybody, which hadn't been in there previously. There are a few things that happened, and, and as I mentioned previously, I could leave the revenue projections at February, where I originally started them, but, you know, in trying to be a little bit more complete and accurate, I updated them, and that's where some of those changes have come from.
It, it sounds to me like the, the big level of discomfort here with the council is the, is the change on the CAP budget without really giving a clear explanation as to why that those, why that's changed, what the, what the need was for the change or where the money is going. So I, I understand the concern from the council.
That is not my concern. That is Paul's concern. At least, that's the question Paul raised. My concern is, at a much higher level, we have a general fund. General fund money can be spent for anything.
Correct.
Things that are being requested from the audience, the things that need to go to payroll, to raises, all of that stuff. It could be used for anything. That is what we need to fully understand where we are. We have a policy, according to the audit and the paperwork you gave me, that the council has done a very, I think, very smart thing by saying that they want to target at least a 50% reserve, which we're not there.
No.
And yet we're still coming up and presenting a budget to the council saying that we have, and now it's down to $1,000, but saying we have money left over. We do not have money left over because we have not paid ourselves. We have not covered a lot of these expenses. And so it would be very helpful if we had a summary sheet on this, and I guess we can't do it tonight, but a summary sheet that, that shows the fund balances, and I know you prepared one, but it doesn't tie in with all the rest of this stuff. You go from great detail to very general statements that is very difficult to follow. I don't see how one can go from having extra money to not having extra money, to cutting budgets, when, had we just gone ahead and acted it without asking a single question, if we'd adopted that as submitted and said, good, great job, we would have an entirely different budget than what we're looking at today, a couple of weeks later.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, and your point is well taken, and you're right. You're looking, I was looking very specific at a, at an operation of the city and just wanting to make sure that we didn't budget, we didn't cover some of the deficit with capital improvement money. That's what I was getting at. But your point is well taken, and this is the eighth budget I've been through since I've been on the city council. And I've always thought that, on all the other boards that I sit on, including Gold Coast Transit, the board is presented with a budget. The departments are summarized. The finance director goes through and gives a summary. It says, okay, here's our anticipated revenue, here's our anticipated expenditures, here's how much of these revenues we're not going to spend and we're going to put to our surplus, and here's the money that we have available after paying ourselves into our reserve fund for whatever the rest of the city may ask for. And if this, and if it's sufficient at that point that we can meet everybody's requests, great. If it's not, and the council wants to look in a more detailed manner into operations, fine. But quite frankly, I look at this and I see so much detail that I haven't got a clue whether these numbers are correct, and I really don't care. I'm looking at the big picture. And if I could just see some summary that says, here's our anticipated revenues, here's what we're going to spend, here's how much we're either going to increase or decrease our revenue, our, our reserve fund, here's what we're going to spend on capital improvements, and here's how much money, after all that's done, we have to fund the library and the Green Coalition and whatever else there is, that's meaningful to me. Looking at all these details as absolutely, first of all, I don't understand at all. And second of all, it's, it's not really helpful when you're using it as a finance management tool.
I would point out that the gray, the gray handouts that you have there, some of that information that you're asking for is in there. On page four of 11, for instance, is a schedule of the estimated uses and, and sources and uses of funds for each of the major fund categories that we have, including general fund. And then on page five, we have the detail for the general fund by itself in a summarized manner by department, rather by individual line items. So, so this, you know, the summarized version is in the packet before you.
And I'm looking at the, the, let me just ask one question, we'll go to something simple, like the city council's budget. It shows in 2014, 140, roughly $147,000.
Yes.
It shows in 15, 16, 143. It shows in the current budget, 146. And yet it says proposed at 124, showing a reduction of 21, almost $22,000, no explanation. Then we go over to the pink sheet, and it shows city council, $260 for water and a positive adjustment of $740. I mean, I don't know how you tie those two together. And I'd, I'd be curious as to how the city council either overspent or why they would be that hard to predict expenditures for the coming year.
It's really, it's a reallocation.
Well, I think it's Golden State Water versus Casitas Municipal Water. That's the difference there, sir.
No, and all honesty...
That appears to be telling. Way to go, Flo.
We have evaluated how, where things are actually coded into the general, into our general ledger. And some of those, we felt that were not necessarily appropriate charges to city councils. So we moved them, some of them into the city manager's budget. Some of them went into the, the non, what do we call it, non-departmental budget. And so that's part of why there's a decrease. It's, that's really the main reason why there's a decrease in the city, the city council budget, is because we looked at where things were appropriate. For instance, you know, there's some, some fees for organizations that, you know, Lafco or whatever, that I think is one that comes to my mind, that might have been in there, and we put it in city managers or citywide. So it's stuff like that. And we could go into the details and go through every single one of these changes, if you would like. We could stay at a high level.
No, I don't, but, but large percentage changes normally come with a narrative explanation where, where the money went. Otherwise, it's all just a waste of our time. We'd have no way of knowing, and maybe we wouldn't even care if we did know. But we don't know. And yet we have all these charts we're trying to coordinate, and, well, maybe what Randy said earlier, we ought to start honing in on that building.
Just a couple. I hate to say...
Wait a minute, Susan, wait a minute, I, just a second, I ignore, I can't see around Randy. No, just joking. Susan, come on, you...
No, I don't have one thing.
You don't? Okay, go, Bill.
Yeah, just, maybe big detail questions. What color percentage is built into this budget proposal as we see it?
So it's, it's 2%.
Okay, so in other words, that is, that's an element for us to decide what we're going to do with or not.
Correct.
2%, so that is built into this budget.
That is correct.
And another item, I just, really quick, is, is the acting community development director charged to contract services or to salary in this budget?
Contract.
Okay, and so...
I will, I am planning to come back to, with the next meeting, with a contract for some interim services.
Okay. I just, what I'm asking for is I see the, the salary for the CDD director.
Correct.
Which we are not charging to as of June 20, right?
That's correct.
And that, that was not adjusted, because that is a new development.
Okay, thank you.
But it will be.
I just wanted to...
Yes.
That amount to some thousands of dollars possibly. Okay, that's a couple of, oh, well, one other question while I have the floor, before anybody else wants to dive in. Special revenue funds.
Yes.
Again, a little detail, sorry, but it's any, any funds that are restricted to specific activities with federal, state, and local government regulations, that means us too. Why wouldn't the Public Art Fund be in this list, according to that definition?
The Public Art Fund?
Yes.
Because the Public Art Fund is actually deferred revenue.
Well, it's collected and then restricted.
Yeah, you could do, you could put it into a restricted fund and have a special revenue fund. The practice has been to put it into, receive it and put it into a deferred revenue in the general fund. So it's actually sitting as a deferred revenue on the balance sheet.
What I'm trying to say is, how does that, it is restricted by code to certain purposes.
Correct, and that's why it has its own...
So why isn't the general fund as opposed to a restricted fund, is my question? It seems to fit this definition.
I've asked the same question, and there's little things I'm changing as we go along.
Okay.
That's one of them that will be, because I've asked the same question. In my opinion, it should be in a special revenue fund. Currently, it sits in a deferred revenue. I think we have far too many deferred revenue accounts in the general fund.
It tends to show more money in the general fund than there should be.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's not, once again, it's a balance sheet item, but...
We agree.
Yeah, we agree.
All right.
It's just one of those things that, it's on my list, but hasn't, I haven't been able to tackle it yet.
We'll move it over.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one more question. The, the pink sheet balances with the surplus on page five of 11 summaries with there being a $1,250 surplus.
On, or the gray sheet?
I mean, the gray sheet.
Okay.
However, earlier, Mr. McClary, you said that you'd increased the availability of funds to, from 100,000 to 120,000 for community projects or community expenditures. But I don't see where that is in the budget on, on page five of 11. I see where we've budgeted for the Recreation Department or the Commission of Planning, and I, it may be that, that for instance, in the Historic Preservation Commission, there might be something, or the Arts Commission is in it at $60,000. But I don't see where any of the community organizations are in that list.
That number you're looking for is down towards the bottom in the non-departmental section, where you'll see an item for Community Outreach at $124,000.
Okay, that's it, Community Outreach?
Yeah, it's in that, it's included in that. There's a couple of other items in there.
Okay.
Including the 3,000 for the Independence Day program and 1,000, that's the 2-on-1 requested.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have three questions. One, is it somehow tradition, or why is it that we are doing salaries at the same time as the budget as opposed to just having an appropriation for future possible salary adjustments?
Just simply because that's the way it's been done in the past.
Okay, well, I would, I would respectfully request that we not do it that way and that we also have a, a total compensation salary comparison done so that we can be sure we're being fair with our employees, but we understand what we're doing and where we're spending the money. Second, is there any money in the budget for a general plan update or review?
Yes, there is, there actually is.
Where is that?
Some of that money, see, we collect money, and that's one of those deferred revenue items that we have.
Can you point to it?
And it's on, well, it's not, the, it's actually, some of that is included in the community development, the planning section. I'd have to go and look at the details here and find it.
Okay.
Do we know how much?
Just a moment.
Because we're way past due for doing something with our general plan update.
I'm not sure if we specifically spelled it out in the line items here, but it is part of the contract services.
Mayor, may I comment further on that?
Sure.
I think that another reason, the mayor's point is very important, is that some of our concerns with the City of Ojai's general plan update are integrally related to what is going on right now with the county's general plan update, and specifically the Ojai area plan, of which we are a part, and is also, we have special concerns with respect to our sphere of influence and area of interest. So I think it's something that we definitely want to hone in on, is what we, we might be able to allocate because of the timeliness of the issue, particularly this current fiscal year.
Okay. My third concern, and maybe this is one that, it's a public works question, but we just had a gift from nature by having the rain. Now we have all of the maintenance expenses of cleaning the weeds and trimming the trees. For us to cut the $60,000 that was in that budget on June 6th down to 30,000 with the explanation that they couldn't spend all the money because it would take six months to get the tree trimming program going, that seems to me that there's something not...
We're actually at, at zero this year, and this would be the first year that we have a program.
Right, but in the budget that was given to me on June 6th...
Correct.
It was $60,000 for tree trimming.
That's correct, right.
And Lord knows, we need to start spending that and start spending it immediately. If you've seen some of the trees, that our branches are breaking off, not because they're sick trees, it's because the weight is so heavy. And if they don't get pruned, we even had one that split out here in our own front yard, but they're over near the schoolyard, there at the elementary school that's been in the news all, the Ojai Elementary School. Have you seen the pepper tree that lost a huge branch because of weight, not because there's anything wrong with it? So just as a heads up, it seems to me that was a, is a, going to be a false economy to take $30,000 away from the Public Works Department to do maintenance and still act like we have money to give away to other worthy causes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
I, I share your concern, but I, another part of it is that since it has been zero in the past, I like to see, kind of, it kind of goes with what we were already talking about in terms of mid-year review, our October review. Is, is I'm okay with a, with a lower amount, as long as it's kind of a special area of interest when we look at reviewing how much got done with that 30,000 between now and then October. We can get a report on that and then decide how much more needs to be done. I think that's part of it, is to have some sort of sense of what we're accomplishing with the money.
No, I would agree with that, but I would submit to you, you spent $60,000 in tree trimming in this valley very quickly. And if we don't do it during the summer, we wait till the fall, I mean, that'll take on a whole new meaning, fall, when the trees go over. It just seems to me it's kind of a foolish place, right after we have the big rain and we have, these trees have all leafed out and they look lovely, and then they're starting to break off. And I, it just seems like a shame to decide, because on the 6th, if we'd adopted that budget, we'd had $60,000 for public works. Now for some reason, we got 30,000.
And it seemed from your explanation, Mr. McClary, that it was because we weren't going to spend anything for the first six months, so just cut it in half and spend the 30,000 in the second six months. I think we need to start spending it immediately.
Yeah. I don't see any reason why you can't spend $60,000 in four months.
I don't, I don't know that we ever said that we were going to wait six months to do the work. I, I think it's really just a matter of trying to find a lot of competing needs and making them all balance out, so...
Right, but, but we started out saying we had extra money. We have a lot of people with expectations that they like a little bit of that extra money. We don't have extra money because we're not doing all the things we need to be doing, and we're not identifying them for some reason. So this is the process by which that's all done. And it doesn't have to be precise in a budget. I think, was it Randy that said, you know, you budget today and you adjust tomorrow? That's what budgets are for. But they are guidelines that they set our priorities and say where the money is going to go and where the necessity is. We have obligations. Public safety and public works are the most primary of functions for municipalities. That's where the health, safety, and welfare starts. Parks are nice, cultural, planning's great if you can get to it. Building and safety falls into the health and safety area. But to not deal with all of those, although we're taking care of the public safety through the sheriff's office, but these issues in public works, that is not a place I want to see us cut back at this stage and say, well, we'll get to it, because we just have neglected it in the past. We also had zero rain, too, before. Now that we're having to do it, we need to take care of the roads and we need to take care of the trees. Okay, thank you for listening.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All actions will be taken during the regular agenda.
Right, okay, so...
We're just getting information here.
Correct.
Now, just, in, you know, in, in line with what you've been talking about, we do need to have regular budget updates throughout the year. And I do want to announce that we have finally been able to hire an accountant that will give, be able to help me out. And so we will be able to use that person and be able to stay on top, get on top of some of the things, things more. And my plan is that we would be bringing back a, a budget report, where we are budget versus actual, at least at the six-month mark. But my goal would be to have it quarterly, quarterly throughout the year, so that we would have a chance to come in and we will have a formal report on where we are so that the things can be evaluated as well.
Okay, any other questions?
I just want to...
I just want to know, are the members of the public that want to speak on this going to speak later?
I did have, but somebody did, we had a card earlier, but we've got one, is it Cassandra Marino?
Yep. Hi. I'm just here to talk about the item six, I believe. It's the complete streets master plan and...
Oh, that's later.
Next meeting.
Later.
That meeting starts at seven.
Oh, I thought it was part of the budget.
Well, it's confusing.
I sat here for an hour. Can I just, two seconds, just say quickly? No?
At seven, well, up to him.
Well, I know, let's start with, hang on.
I was confused.
Let's start with the city attorney. This is budget, Bill is a, is a budget meeting, maybe that fits in, I don't know.
Did you have, was it related to the budget?
Yeah, I was just hoping that we would...
You could take the comment. It's sufficiently related to the budget and you can always take more comment, you just can't take less comments, so you could take the comment if you wish.
Yeah, if I was in a courtroom, I would say, Susan, you're leading the witness, but, you know, it's okay, go ahead.
Okay. I was just, I was thrilled to hear that it's coming before the council and, and there was one specific concern that we had. I live down here on Blanche Street and we were just hoping, we were concerned that the, that there weren't four-way stop signs included on where the bike path and the streets intersect, especially...
You should discuss that during the agenda.
Okay, I was confused, I'm sorry.
Because it's not a, but it's not a budget specific.
But she can comment.
Yeah.
If she needs to leave.
Yeah.
So that's, I'm nursing a baby, so I got to run.
Just to go, she's got babies.
Write it down then, let me write it down.
Okay.
And I would support you in that comment.
Oh, I appreciate that, I appreciate it. And we have three little kids and we have a lot of friends with kids and the mob shop's concerned about it too, just because, you know, it'd be nice to not have an accident happen before we hopefully address that and make it a little bit safer. So that's it.
Where, where was it again?
Just where the, we just want four-way stop signs at the intersections downtown especially where the path and the streets intersect. Right now, there's stop signs for the bikes, but not for the cars and the cars just kind of whip through there and there's lots of kids that you...